Is Monday, November the 10th, 2025. It's nine o'clock in the morning and the Kirk County Commissioners Court is now in session. If you would, please rise for the prayer and pledges we've led back to Commissioner Harris.
Lord, we pray that you guide us as always, satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting. Please guide us through the transitions our county and country go through as we know you have a plan for us. Lord, please guide us so that this meeting can be productive, let us be effective and decisive. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Okay. I apologize for my late appearance. I woke up with no hot water this morning, so I caught up.
Does that mean no shower?
Huh? No shower, no shave. I gotta get taken care of today. Anyway, first thing we need to do for Commissioners Court meeting is turn these things off. Turn them off or to vibrate so they don't interrupt the proceedings. And then after that, the next thing we do is public input. I've got one person that signed up to speak. He was on the agenda anyway, so he didn't need to do it, but he did it.
Now, there is another gentleman.
Oh, there is?
Yes, George.
George Iker?
Yes, he's not on there. This is input.
Okay. Mr. Iker.
Thanks, sir. My name is George Iker and I represent the Kerrville Crystal Sliding Corporation. And a little over a year ago, the court issued the memorandum of understanding that legitimized our role in decorating the courthouse, and I wanted to give you an update on where we were. This year, if any of you walked in now, you noticed that K-Pub's already putting up our new tree. The old tree had a lot of electrical problems with it. Half the time, half of it was unlit, and I'm sure all of you guys have gotten calls about how come the trees not lit. Shane Evans, who's out there, was one of the, one of our stalwarts that was able to fix it. But what we have, this is 50-foot tall. It's five foot taller than the others. It's got a four-foot base. It's really gonna be spectacular. The connections, they use cannon plugs as opposed to the socket and regular connection for electrical connections, and it's essentially waterproof. Mike Whitler, who is our engineer on this, tested them and put them underwater, and it's still remaining wet, so we have hives for this year. The decorations are essentially the same as they were last year. We contracted with, uh, who did we contract with? Kerrville Crystal Slides out of Spring Branch. We signed a three-year contract last year, so this is year two of that contract. The only addition we have, we've added green lighted bowls in memory of the folks that were lost on the Fourth of July flood, and we figured that's gonna be a kind of nice sentimental touch to this. We sold the old tree just for your information. We cleaned out the maintenance barn. Shane's got all kinds of extra space to deal with now, but we sold that to the Christmas Ranch that is erected in welfare, and we also got rid of some of the excess materials we had over there, some excess decorations. One of the neat things that we've added this year, you should have a handout up there, is we're gonna have Mary on the square, and we're starting at five o'clock with vendors and with food trucks, and it's sponsored by Security State Bank and Trust, so we will appreciate those folks definitely. One of the best things we've got this year is a lighted heated porta potty trailer. One of the comments we've had before, particularly all the kids out there, there's no bathrooms available, so this is a heated trailer, so regardless of what it is, it'll take care of it. So it's really a nice touch. I realize you all can't ask any questions, but we are excited about the prospects. It'll be a week from Saturday, and I'd like to invite all of you to come out and help us light the trees. So thank you very much for your time, and God bless you guys for your service.
Thank you, George. Okay, any other public input? There being none, we'll move on to the Commissioners' comments. Let's start at the other end.
I've worked three.
Four.
Okay, well, a lot of things been going on, fundraisers and what have you. Went to the Vied School fundraiser Friday before last, it was well-attended. Hopefully, they raised lots of money, and it's a fun event. Those things are family-oriented and always fun. This Friday, Annual Sheriff's fundraiser, badges, boots, and bids, Friday at Gravity Check, I believe it starts at 5:30, is that correct? And so, please come out and support the Sheriff Foundation out there. They do a lot of great things for our well-deserving Sheriff's Department out there. So also, you know, we have something in Ingram called the First Thursday Meeting, and that's open to anybody and everybody, and it's at the Presbyterian Church beside Tom Moore High School. It's at 8:30, never runs over an hour. You get out of there by 9:30, but it's for concerned citizens of West Kerr County. So First Thursday of every month, I encourage you to attend. If you haven't ever been to one, you might like it. Wind warnings, we've had a lot of wind lately, and things are dry, dry, dry out there, so be cautious of that. Burn ban's in effect right now, but you've just gotta be careful what you're doing out there these days. So that's all I got.
Okay, three.
All right. Well, it's my birthday.
Happy birthday.
I am 250 years old.
Oh.
I am a United States Marine, and today I wear my buckle proudly. We had an event at the Gravity Check Saloon, which would do well for you too, because they did really well for us, and hosting us over the weekend as we had our birthday ball, and our cadets, if you missed them, were there to provide their first dress uniform activity. Carl was there, and it was a great event. So don't give up hope, because tomorrow you can see them in action here in Kerrville, and we have a big deal going on, and Jenna Sanchez has done incredible preparing for this. This is the naming of our building, the Ally Burton Junior Building, over there at 550 Earl Garrett, tomorrow 3:00 PM. Tomorrow, 3:00 PM, be there. It's gonna be a great event if you can. Ally Burton will be there. He's 101 years old. He is a three-war warrior who's done so much for our community as a banker and so much for our country. I can't think of any better person to name a building after, especially if you're born and raised on that street.
Yep.
He has an incredible story, incredible guy, and I'm very excited to see and be a part of that as your emcee tomorrow. And you'll see again, our cadets there in action as they present the colors, Shriners coming out with the band, Kerrville Fire Trucks coming out with their large fire truck and flag, and that's the way to spend Veterans Day. I mean, you really can't beat that, especially after 250 years of our country's heritage to have somebody there that's 101 years old. So, yeah, I'm pretty excited about that. Yeah, the moisture in the morning gives me hope, and then it dries up, and then at least it's getting cold. I do hope for more rain so we can adjust some of the burn ban. I thank you for Commissioner Tom that got out there and helped some of the debris removal that needed to be done in our area as some of that continues, and we still have a few more folks that need debris cleanup, and that's still going on. Thank you for Robbie for that. That's probably enough from this seat. Thank you.
Good. Two.
Yeah, a little follow-up. The court had agreed to accept a donation of a, it turns out it's a 25-foot, I believe it's a red oak tree. That's gonna be in Flat Rock Park. It gets installed Wednesday morning, so I'll try to be there to coordinate with our Director of Maintenance Shane Evans, get a final location. We already have a more or less location picked out, and I think there'll be an event later that I'm gonna let Commissioner Jones talk about. We also have another donation. We have the Alamo Letter Plaque. That's the Liberty or Death thing, quite a good-sized plaque. Anyway, it is ready for shipment, so again, I'll be getting with Shane, and I think Commissioner Holt may join in to try to find a final place to install that plaque. This was something we accepted months ago, but I'm pleased to see that coming together. Otherwise, continue to work with the Flood Warning System team, being led by Tom Mosher. We've had one meeting since our last court, and, you know, we're moving very close to finalizing the Flood Warning System performance requirements in preparation for issuing RFPs, hopefully by the end of the month, if not certainly early December, and we meet again this Wednesday afternoon to try to get it a little further along the path. And then yesterday, I was approached by one of my constituents with a request for the county to put on a Citizens Academy similar to what Kerrville does. So I've never...
We do that. Sheriff's Office does it.
Yeah. Is it just Sheriff's Office?
Oh, it's initial one.
Or do we do all the departments?
I did one.
Sheriff's Offices. Yeah, well, I think...
Well done.
What they're looking for is a little bit more comprehensive one.
Well, they have the CERT program.
So, yeah, I know, but...
Which is, which is comprehensive, trust me.
Yeah. But I'm, I got the impression in this discussion, again, I haven't attended the Kerrville Citizens Academy, but, you know, the idea is each department head has a presentation about what they do and how they serve the people of Kerr County.
They do that during, they do that during...
I don't know if we have every department head, but we have most of them.
Well, okay.
Yeah, I thought...
If we're doing it, great.
Comprehensive for rule of law. All the judges were there. It just sounded like a good idea, so I'm bringing it up.
It is a good idea. Sign up. Reaffirm it.
That's why we do it.
I don't know when it's planned to do another one, but I encourage it.
And for those of you that haven't done that, it is really informative. You really learn county government pretty quickly.
Yeah.
And you learn it's not what you think it is.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
Well, it's, one of the things about it is, we have 26 elected officials at county level, did you know that? One of which is the county surveyor, who doesn't get paid anything, but 25 elected officials who don't answer to anybody except the voters. Now, that's herding cats. Okay?
It is.
That's herding cats, and yet we do it. And we do it relatively well, and get along, and actually like each other.
Right.
Good.
Good.
Uh, let's see. Just kind of a reminder to the court, I'm not sure if we actually need to make a formal decision or not, but we talked about it in the last meeting about the county-wide burn ban, and at some stage going back to delegating that to the individual precincts, so maybe you can comment on that later.
I'm happy to.
And then the last one I have is, I just thought I'd inform the public that there is a Commissioners Court Candidates Forum scheduled for tomorrow night at the Acapulco Restaurant on Sydney Baker North, starting at 6:00 PM. So I plan to attend, and I'll answer any questions about my record and why I'm running for reelection, and I encourage the public to attend. It's just for Commissioner Court candidates. That's it.
I don't know if I like going last.
Welcome to my world.
Just a couple of quick things, following up of what George had had on their tree. That's gonna be a busy day on the 22nd. We do have, as Commissioner Pace has talked about, we've got a tree that's being donated by Mosty's Brothers Nursery. There's also gonna be a red granite marker that's donated by Boulder Designs of Fredericksburg that'll be placed there in memory of what's happened here for this flood event. We've been working pretty hard with these folks with Spirit of Liberty. They have a flyer that we're gonna get out, starting probably later today. We'll get it out on the website, we'll get it out to churches everywhere else we can. This is an open event for this dedication ceremony. It'll be at four o'clock, it'll be from four to five o'clock, and so you can leave from there to go to the parade. And so it'll make it a really nice day's event for you and your families and kids. They'll have Santa Claus there for the kids, be something really encouraging for them. Looks like they're gonna have a lot of electives there, Greg Abbott, Ted Cruz, John Cornyn, and Chip Roy. They're gonna have a lot of folks there. This is a pretty honorable event that they're talking about putting on here, so we're pretty blessed with that donation that we received with all that. We also have just an update on the debris. We haven't done that in a while. We're at about 1.8 million cubic yards, which is a whole lot more than what we anticipated. Ash Brit, the contractor that works in the west part of the county, has pretty much concluded their operations. They'll start doing closures on it road by road, but they're at about 100%. Series that handles from town to east of the county is about in the same place. They completed out of the 1,036 right-of-entry, ROEs, there were 1,032 or 33 that were approved, and those have all been confirmed and completed. This operation's winding down. You will see that most of the work left now is gonna be on the river, and so that's the reason you're not seeing near as many trucks out here running as what we've had in the past. So they're doing a great, great job with it as far as getting it all done in a very timely manner. Most states or areas that go through this kind of tragedy are years getting this completed. We have not gone through that. We've had good management, good working relationships with the state and with FEMA, and we have pulled this off in, I think, a record time with what we're getting done here. And so a lot to be said for that. Doesn't mean there aren't some things that we're not gonna wanna address, or things that have gone wrong somewhere along the way. But to be at this stage of where we're at is phenomenal. We couldn't have asked for better partners on all this, and to take that burden off of the county financially is the most important thing for the county budget and how we view it. That has really helped us out tremendously. I continue to work with the Guadalupe River Flood Warning System. When Rich and their committee get done, it'll come to us, and then we'll start working with William, and we'll start trying to get that implemented, along with Jonathan Letts and the Rifearian Recovery Group. And we've got a lot of good work going on with that, and get this county back whole is what our, our goal is. So that's it. Thank you, Judge.
And to answer your question to me earlier, this is my opportunity to respond about the burn ban. We divided the burn ban into two parts back at the beginning of the disaster. One for the floodway, which was the affected area, as we called it in the order, and one for the unaffected area, meaning those high grounds that are outside that floodway. And we lived with that bifurcated burn ban for the better part of, what, three months? And then we went ahead and rejoined the burn ban for everything because we got into some real dry conditions. And so what we're looking to do is, when we are ready to go ahead and lift the burn ban for the floodway, which will be a big deal, that's what we can burn down in the floodway, we'll take burn ban and make it consolidated again, and put it back with the precinct commissioners. So we've got a plan, and hopefully we'll get a little rain, but you never know this time of year if we're gonna get it or not.
That's true.
But with that, that's kind of what the plan is for the burn ban.
And just so everybody knows, even if we were to get a week's worth of rain and lift it out in the unaffected areas, none of the zones along the river corridor have been okay for burning at this point because of recovery.
And we want to be very careful about that.
Yes.
We work probably for the better part of a week coming up with this bifurcated burn ban. Okay, with that, you ready to go?
Yep.
Consideration Agenda, item 1.1. Consider discuss and take appropriate action on a request to add the Daughters of the Republic of Texas to the nonprofit list for use of the Union Church Building in order to receive a 50% reduction of the rental fee. Rebecca Palmieri?
I'm Rebecca Palmieri, and I here, I am here to be part of the Daughters of the Republic of Texas, the Joshua D. Brown chapter, and I have our form here, and we're requesting, as you had said, to be identified as a nonprofit charitable organization so that we could use that Union Church for our 30th anniversary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the Daughters of the Texas, was it?
Daughters of the Republic of Texas.
I've got something in my seat.
That's mine.
Pace did it. It was me.
My chair is not very comfortable, and I used this. I was wondering what happened. I thought the judge stole it.
It's not a whoopee cushion. Now we know.
It's found its proper home.
There you go.
Okay.
But the church.
We've got a motion.
The Union Church.
Yes. We've got a motion and a second.
Yep.
And I want to thank you for coming and being part of this. My wife is a member of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and she is determined to get me qualified as a son of the Texas, of the American Revolution, which I have now officially qualified, but she also came to me and said, "Did you know you qualify for the Sons of the Texas?" Well, and I do. So I'm looking forward to being able to get together with you.
So for those of us who don't know, what are the qualifications?
You have to have somebody that fought in the American Revolution.
Okay.
Somebody that fought in the Texas.
In your lineage.
I have a Texas Ranger that was great-grandfather.
Cool.
Married a Comanche, that's why I'm so mean. But with that, any other discussion?
No, just thank you for paying at least some of the fee. You know, a lot of my voting has been no free rides, right, in our facilities, because I want to generate funds that we desperately need within our thing, so thank you at least doing a half-reduction and paying some because we still gotta pay electrical bills, and I'm very conscious about that for our treasury.
Okay, any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you. Welcome. Moving on to item 1.2. Consider discuss and take appropriate action on a request from Kerrville Pets Alive to use the courthouse grounds for their Fill the Bowls Food Drive on Saturday, November 15. We're in at the last minute, but we're here. Karen, this is Karen Guerrero for Kerrville Pets Alive.
Karen Guerrero, Kerrville Pets Alive. I'm here to ask, good morning to the judge and commissioners, I'm here to ask for the use of the courthouse grounds this weekend from the 15th and the 16th for our annual Fill Their Bowls Pet Food Drive. It will be 9:24 on Saturday and 10:03 on Sunday, and what we do is, we have this annually in order to be able to help people with pet food during the holiday season so they can take care of themselves and their family, and we request permission to use the property.
I move for approval. So, a motion and a second. Okay, any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to say one more thing, is that we do every Friday have a free pet food pantry, which is year-round. We also have pet supplies. We also have six free spay and neuter clinics coming up for the community. We're trying to help people heal and take care of their pets so they can take care of themselves, so be on the lookout for those dates. Thank you. So, be on the lookout for those dates. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for all you do. Okay. We move on to item 1.3, which is a timed item at 9:10, but we're just now getting to it. It's consider discuss and take appropriate action to authorize the River Working Group to plant seeds and trees in Flat Rock Park. Former Commissioner Letts.
Good morning, everyone, Mr. Judge. Here I'm representing the River Working Group, Long-Term Recovery. And what we have right now is that we have, we're doing workshops around the county. We did one in Hunt area yesterday, and there's one coming up in Riverside Nature Center, and also in Center Point coming up next weekend. Part of that, though, we're giving away trees or plants and seed. And we, we're not sure, but we may have some excess, and we need a place to put them right away. And it seems that Flat Rock Park right along the river's edge is a really good spot to put some of both the seeding and the plants, and then down the road, there may be other plants and trees to plant right along that river. Of course, we coordinate that with Shane, and we just want approval to be able to do that. Also, we just, more information along the Long-Term Recovery Group, we're working with Hunt School, Faith Bradbury. She is making, we donated seed mixes to her, so she can have her students make seed balls. If you don't know what a seed ball is, you take a little bit of clay, some seeds, some mulch and stuff, and you make little balls, and then the kids get to go out and throw it along the river and plant seeds that way. It's a real good way to get germination. So anyway, we donated quite a bit of seed to Faith and her classes up in Hunt. Like I said, we have those working groups. We also have, we have a lot more going on. One of these days' agendas, I'll probably put on the agenda, is to give an update as a full-scale of what we're doing across the river. Really not on the agenda today, so I won't go into all that. But today, just need approval to plant in Flat Rock Park, over along the river's edge, some of the items that we have.
I guess my question for you, Jonathan, is, you know, we haven't actually seen where you're gonna plant it. I'm all in favor of restoring the vegetation, but, you know, obviously, we have to work with Shane and make sure it's not in the areas where we typically mow and so forth. So, you mentioned along the edge, all the way along, or?
No, it's pretty much, it'll be right about the 10-foot right along the river's edge. Kinda really, a lot of the plants that we have are really almost planted right at the water's edge.
Okay.
Especially this time of year with the drought. So it's really this number.
Mostly trees, mostly grasses?
Most of these are grasses.
Grasses.
Sedges, things of that nature.
Okay.
No better person to try to figure out landscaping, sir, than frankly than you.
He's right in there.
Thank you.
We'll work with Shane. And there's some of the areas, probably at the park, that would be good to plant the seed mix. Some of that stuff is pretty tall.
Well, I know we lost some trees in the back park, so I don't know if you were gonna put anything back in there.
Down the road, that's probably next year, they're growing, San Antonio Town and Gardens is growing about 50,000 trees for us. They'll be going up and down the river, and a lot of those will be going into, you know, county parks, city parks, and private landowners along the way.
Did everybody hear that?
50,000?
They're growing 50,000 trees for us to replant on the river that we lost. And that's amazing.
It's 50,000, yeah.
Yeah. And that's just a portion.
Yeah, that's just a portion. There's other groups that are doing the same thing. Trees of Texas, trees of Houston, they're donating trees as well. But San Antonio Town and Gardens by themselves are doing 50,000 trees, and they're collecting seeds and all that. But it's a pretty interesting thing what they're doing. The Head Country Alliance is very closely involved with all this project, as well as UGRA.
Yeah. We need some root systems, those grasses and sedges will help immediately.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the River Working Group to plant seeds and trees in Flat Rock Park.
Second. Got a motion and a second? And I wanna thank you for teaching me what a seed ball was. I'm from West Texas, and we don't grow anything out there, so. I learned, make 'em, just throw 'em out there on the river, and they grow.
No, no, I was in that meeting, and we were having a lot of fun with it, talking about getting potato guns and shooting them across the river back and forth. And they said that you can do that, so it might be a good project for your guys that like to shoot.
I don't know if we can trust them yet with the potato gun.
Let's move on next time. Can we take a vote?
We've got a motion and a second.
But this is, this is a very, this is a very, very detailed and in-depth portion of this recovery.
Sure.
And the wisdom I've gained from being on that committee has just blown me away, listening to the different areas. Because you've got experts in all these areas coming in, and are explaining why we need to do it a particular way, and what does work and what doesn't work. And so Jonathan's done an excellent job of bringing all this together.
Okay, those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you. Timed item at 9:15, we're running a little late, is 1.4. Consider discuss and take appropriate action on a request to plant up to 20 trees near the lower portion of the Veterans Pathway in Flat Rock Park. Welcome.
Good afternoon, morning, I'm Katie Campbell. And I'm the coordinator of Bird City Curville, which is a coalition of 30 different groups that are in favor of improving the environment for birds and encouraging birding. And Flat Rock Park has been really a hotspot for birding. But I'm here mainly because the Veterans Pathway was dedicated last year, and then we had a little flood in September.
There was nothing little about that flood, Ms. Campbell.
Yes, sir.
Nothing little about that flood?
Oh, she talked about September.
The first one?
September 18th.
Okay, yeah.
Was, you know, the water came up, but it didn't wipe everything out.
No.
So, we planted a bunch of stuff in November, and then July 4th, it all wiped away. And then, the Veterans Pathway is not a tribute to anybody right now, it's looking pretty sad. So, we had a bunch of, we have volunteers, and we will, we want to replant it with our volunteers. And there's a lot of trees left over from some of the native plant sales, and I think some of these, the Riparian Working Group has also been used. But we would like to specifically work along the Veterans Pathway to make it look better sooner. This is the time of year to plant, and we have all these things donated that are just gonna die if we don't put them in the ground. And I actually, these things came from Riverside Nature Center, Bernie Native Plant Society. We're thinking maybe eight or 10 along the side, and we have a lot of other stuff. Now, the other result of the July 4th flood is that it ripped away all of the stuff that the deer eat. So the deer are gonna be really hungry this fall, and we would have to put cages around the stuff that we plant, as much, as many as we can. We've gotten, Bartlett Tree has agreed to dig the holes for us, and we will probably get the same 20 people this year that planted last year, because we never give up hope. And we have red oaks and cedar elms and some cypresses, and hopefully, we can get it all protected. And I have reached out to Shane Evans, I'd like to... It would be nice if we could level it some, it's created some giant potholes. It looks like it's been bombed out there. And I don't know that they can do that, but it would be nice if we could create a berm even so that the water wouldn't come up so much the next time it happens. So that's what I'm asking, and I would also talk to Shane about how we're gonna get these things watered. Because this 25-foot red oak is gonna need to be watered too, and... Maybe we can put together some volunteers that could bring a tank of water around and water everything, so. We're pretty good at wrestling up the volunteers.
Looks like we're gonna hear from Shane.
So, that's what I'm asking, is permission to plant these trees in the Veterans Pathway area. We're not gonna deal with the banks until next year. I mean, the River Working Group is working on that, and we don't wanna interfere with that, so.
I'll get you started with a motion to approve the request to plant up to 20 trees in the lower portion of the Veterans Pathway in Flat Rock Park.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? And I see we've got Shane at the back of the room. Do you wanna address any of this?
Yes, I do, this, I appreciate it. On Wednesday, we're, and she addressed that situation around the pathway, it being kinda tore up. Wednesday, probably afternoon, one of my guys will be, will have a front-end loader kinda dressing up and cleaning that up. One, we started to do that because of that 25-foot red oak tree that's gonna be put in. Big day on Saturday, so we're gonna get that kinda cleaned up. And also, while we're doing that, try to address some of the situations where some of those holes are along the pathway. Because one, we can't mow there because it is still kinda tore up there, and we wanted to get that cleaned up so we can get it, you know, start mowing those areas. So, we are gonna be working on it this week, starting Wednesday.
Shane, did you say the red oak is gonna be planted Wednesday or Saturday?
Wednesday, but the Saturday is that big Memorial Day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, right.
So we were trying to get, we're gonna try to get that cleaned up for that.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
For everything y'all are doing, it's very greatly appreciated, and people like you and volunteering all your service, that's what makes it work.
I got another question for you, though, and you said it, but I'm just... Three different type trees, cedar elm, cypress, and?
Red oak.
Red oak.
Red oak.
And about what size?
They're five-gallon, they're like this.
Okay.
They're just, you know, it's gonna be a while. I have a red oak at home I've had for five years, and it's 30 feet tall.
Right.
So, it's gonna take a while to come back, but it, you know, at least we'll be, have something out there. But we also have some things like chili pecking and the brush, the shorter things. Hopefully, some stuff the deer won't eat up. But just to get some, there's, you're not gonna like what's out there right now.
Well, that leads me to my next question. We gonna have some kind of protection around them so the deer don't?
Yes.
Mow them down, okay, good. Okay.
I have some questions.
Okay.
How are the trees going to be installed? Is there gonna be equipment on county property, doing the digging? What does that look like?
Well, Jack Zuber tells me that they have some kind of new equipment, that's an air blaster that digs a hole. And he's aware that the pathway is concreted only so wide, so they're gonna have to go along there. They install trees all the time, so.
But a private entity, it's not county equipment, right? That's beholden, probably which was the question is, we have to make sure, but you have a tree company that's doing this?
Yes.
Okay. As a donation.
So we may need some kind of an agreement to, if we're allowing a private entity on county property to do this, we may need to have something in place that protects all parties.
And we know who dots the i's and crosses the t's.
Right.
I thought she was gonna go there.
So we need to incorporate, right, that pending that agreement.
It's gonna be subject to the county attorney's approval.
Good.
She'll come up with what we need.
Lots of volunteers on the property digging holes too, you know?
And by the way, your description of that looking like a war zone, I walked the river trail yesterday. It looks like a war zone. It's a shame. It really hurts. Okay, those in favor, raise your hand. And this is subject to county attorney coordination? Unanimous. Let's move on to 1.5. Update from Small Business Administration regarding flood-related issues.
Judge, you got it 9:30.
I was looking for Cory.
Good morning.
Oh, he's over there. We're gonna let you go.
I'm sorry.
We've got a timed item at 9:30, we're running behind anyway.
Okay. Good morning, my fellow Texans. I am not Gabriel Pirrellis, I'm Tana Moorhead with the Small Business Administration. I'm a public affairs specialist here. And so I think we were on to give an update about the disaster loan program that we're offering to the community for physical damages and also personal property. Our deadline that we have established, there is a new deadline of November 27th, and that's for the physical damages, for the economic injury for businesses, it is April 6, 2006. That date is remaining the same. And that is the information that I have as far as an update. We are still accepting applications. We have our customer service representatives who are at the First Presbyterian Church, which is diagonally across the street here. They are there serving individuals who are needing to do an application. And applications also can be taken online for those who still need assistance, and that is for homeowners, renters, and businesses.
And let me just clarify that the SBA is saving our bacon right now. Everybody hears about FEMA and what FEMA does. But unless your property has been, has lost 50% of value or more, you don't qualify for FEMA. But you do qualify for SBA loans.
That's correct.
And they are performing brilliantly at this point.
We are both federal agencies, yes.
Well, I know you're both federal agencies, but you're helping the people whose houses aren't completely destroyed.
That's correct.
And that's versus the ones that are.
That's correct.
And FEMA's picking up that. So that was just explaining the difference between what the SBA does and what FEMA does. And the loans are long-term loans, and I think it's about 2.81% interest is what I heard.
That is for, and every applicant is case-by-case basis. So basically, if there is, you know, depending on that individual's financial circumstances, the loan amount is 2.8. And may I also add as well as that, to give the survivor cushion and some relief, it's zero interest, zero payment for the very first year.
Right.
The maximum term is up to 30 years, so that stretches out the payment so that it's affordable for the survivor.
And this is a significant benefit for us. Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Do I?
No, I don't think there is.
Is this just information?
It's information, and I can share with you, you know, our update on our fact sheet, our information where individuals can go online to apply, and also, like I said, to the First Presbyterian Church to work with our customer service representatives, and the phone number as well to our customer service if anyone needs help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Miss Moorhead, thank you for your update.
Thank you. Oh, one other thing I wanted to mention. I wanted to, in observance of Veterans Day tomorrow, I wanted to thank each and every veteran assembled here for your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, everybody who's a veteran, please stand, so we can see you. We got veterans. And in my case, that really wasn't by choice. I was sent to the draft.
Drafted.
The old school. Okay, with that, we've got a timed item at 9:30, and that is, Discussion Surrounding Integration of Cybersecurity Personnel Into the EOC for Cyber Incidents. Brief presentation provided from recent Texas A&amp;M Training Class with Lessons Learned From 2025 July 4 Flood Event. Cory Tennis.
Good morning, Court. As is prudent with any major event, when the dust settles, a thorough review of all the lessons learned is really required for any type of improvement, and the IT department is really no different than that. So, Tyler's gonna give a discussion on a course that I sent him to integrating cybersecurity into the EOC. It was provided by Texas A&amp;M Engineering. And this is kinda step one of our future plans to continue leveraging our partnerships with the different state and government entities. So, he's gonna give a quick presentation, and then we'll open it up for discussions, for questions, for anything else afterwards.
Good morning, Commissioners. So, yeah, I had the privilege of going to the integration for cybersecurity personnel into the EOC. It was put on by TEACs, but they use the curricula from FEMA. And it was more incorporating IT into the existing EOC structure, specifically in the event of an IT issue or incident, talking ransomware, phishing, malware, server goes down. That's sort of the environment that we're walking into with the MGT 456. So this is, I know we have a lot to get to, so I'm gonna go through this quick, the slides are kinda wordy. So, real quick, the CrowdStrike, they're a security company that reports on lots of security issues. The really important ones there are gonna be that the third-party vendors, they noticed that there was a time of attack, went down from, I believe it was 48 minutes to 51 seconds this year. This is all as a result of AI. That's pretty significant, because everybody uses third-party vendors, particularly when they access a server on your internal network to provide support. That can be pretty serious if they don't know that they have a compromise, and then you let them into your network to provide support on a server that you host on-prem, and then they infect your servers, the whole county goes down. So that's pretty significant this year. Additionally, the... So that's pretty significant this year. Additionally, the business email compromise with our move to 365, that could be a, a new attack vector that we need to seriously consider. If someone loses their account credentials, or if someone clicks on a wrong link and someone gets, and attacker gets their account credentials, they could, that could potentially open up the rest of the accounting to phishing. So the, the internal phishing tests that we do are kind of the, the ways in which that we, we train users to look for things like that. So this was kind of their emergency management model, the EOC priorities, the objectives, that all stays the same. I know we've all had a crash course in EOC management recently, so I'm just gonna kind of skip through it. But they, right now FEMA, the way that they've designed it is specifically cyber and IT, they've designed that ESF, that emergency support function role, as an additional operations and support role. And they're looking at making that kind of like a dedicated IT EOC within that, the larger EOC framework. So the, during the, during the floods, for instance, we, we provided more support. If, if the county were to get attacked by, say, ransomware, you would stand up an EOC that was, that was specifically IT-focused in operations rather than just support and response. So that, it changes depending on the attack. Additionally, they recommended that, there's another course, PER 371, that Cory and I have been looking at going into. It's a week-long training in College Station that really focuses on that, that IT as operations rather than just support in case the worst were to happen in the county. If the county were hit by ransomware, I believe the average was a total downtime of 24 days. That's an average across all the counties in Texas that have been attacked. I sat in a classroom with a bunch of other guys who were IT from other counties around this area, and some of them had been, had gone through attacks. And it was a pretty significant downtime for them, pretty massive loss of revenue. So having that plan in place is crucial. Cory and I are working on it right now. He's already drafted up, he's done a ton of work drafting up an emergency plan in place already. We're just finalizing it with the network maps and diagrams, all from what TEACs has recommended. Having those, those event action plans and the incident response plans in place. And again, particularly for the third-party vendors, knowing those call lists and knowing when to involve legal or law enforcement. When, when you find that issue, if a third party had attacked your server. And this is just lessons learned from the July 4 experience. I know that we, we did a lot of things really well. They asked, in the class, they asked who had been through a real emergency. I was one of the only ones that had raised my hand. So that kind of made me a celebrity in that classroom, but.
Do be a distinction.
Applying, we did, a lot of what we did was really well. It was just, we did everything really great. I think it was just finding areas where maybe we could improve just a little bit. I think there's always areas of improvement in everything you do. So kind of the resource management, that would be a big one for us. Having that plan in place, knowing what each department needs, knowing that baseline of where to return to, knowing what they may need for operations, having the computers in place, and having an EOC that's already stocked, that, that was a big one. We had so many outside agencies come in that that setup time just kept growing. And that's, in an IT environment, that's really bad because, I mean, the speed at which some of these IT attacks can move, like you saw, 51 seconds. Takes me longer than 51 seconds to set up a computer for, say, a DPS officer or something. So having that EOC built, particularly for IT and equipped for IT, is, is a massive, massive time saver in one, in an event like this. And then I know kind of like, they mentioned having a secondary EOC as a failover could be beneficial. One of the guys I sat next to, their primary EOC, their server room flooded in the middle of a ransomware attack. And so they had to pull out all of their staff and move them to a secondary EOC, and that was disastrous for them because they lost days of time, response time. So having, having places where staff can immediately move in and outside agencies can come in already equipped is, is, is significant. So just our response, the staff training, the trainings that Cory and I sent out, that's, that we have to stay on top of that. I know sometimes it can be a little bit cheesy. But they are, they are approved by TAC specifically for things like this. Having that training in place, knowing what to look for. Those phishing attacks that we send internally, that they're just kind of like spoof attacks, that's worth paying attention to because it will get you to recognize what the phishing attacks look like. And then having the tabletop exercises. I know that we did, we previously did a tabletop exercise. And having, having those is, is great for just knowledge for every, for everybody, knowing what to look for. And yet just continue to be cautious. The, the voice phishing with the AI coming along, the voice phishing is gonna be a big one. If anybody has a recorded piece of your voice, they can call, say, another user in the county and impersonate you. That's, so having, having a trusted line of communication with each user that you may, or say, another county personnel that you communicate with regularly, that's gonna be really, really important, especially in the coming years as AI evolves. We're gonna have a talk on AI on December 10th. We're gonna go kind of more in-depth on that because that's becoming a pretty significant issue from both attack and defense standpoints. You can use AI to defend as well as attack. So knowing what to look for, and that, that comes down to just knowledge and training. So all the trainings we send out, I would just stay on top of them. And we're gonna continue to send out more and more as this year progresses and then throughout next year as well. So we're just gonna continue to document our baseline operations and continue to draft up our plan with all this sort of in place. I know that was kind of quick, but I know we have a lot to get to, so.
Just one comment. You're one of the first that have provided us after-action from the flood, so I commend y'all for going to a conference, bringing all that together, and facing how we can get better together. That's very important. You know, I know several of us on this Commissioners' Court have voiced, you know, we, we want to make sure we're doing our individual after actions. The only challenge that I discovered back and forth from a fire department to the EOC was a common operational picture. They were traditionally using Wintac or ATAC, which is a military, like Google-like platform that you can layer in positions, whether it's people they found, right? Or where people were operating. It's important to be able to pass that down because it's not traditionally something we take from the sheriff's office, like dispatch, and push that down to a fire department. But without a digital map, the majority of the fire departments were operating in the blind, trying to figure out and getting maps back and forth from the EOC, as my fellow Commissioners know, was one of our roles that we did. So we have a hole there that we need to fill with getting that common operational picture. Now, I, I knew what I was doing and I knew what I was asking for, but I still wasn't successful in getting that from the EOC, as you're aware of already. And I wanted to voice my concern with that, that in the future, when we prepare, that your action arms locally are the volunteer fire departments. They need a common operational picture. It should be the platform the state uses as we would escalate to that level, and it should be that Wintac platform. They, not you, just have to authorize approval to get on that network and to get on that server and to be able to have that remotely in our vehicles and our county phones. Because it is a very good platform in order to pass information down. That's one huge hole.
Yeah. I've seen it and used it. It's in real time, so yeah, it's available tool to use when deployed directly. That's probably one of the, like you said, the biggest gaps that we've noticed amongst other things, just how, you know, we, we did support, I don't know how many agencies very well, but like I said at the beginning of this, we could have done a little bit better job. We're looking for ways to, to improve that moving forward, once we actually have full access to the building again, so we can actually make that a fully functional facility for all the different agencies. Like I said, good lessons learned, and we're moving forward with that. So we're developing, we're developing our plan slowly.
Cory, can you shed a little light? I mean, you, you've been in here before and, and talked about the volume of attacks that the county gets daily. With the advent of AI and as that expands, is that number going up? Is it exponential? Or, I mean, talk a little bit about that.
I'd rather not get into too many specifics, just.
I'm just looking for magnitude.
We've been fortunate to this point. I'll say it that way. We have not seen any dramatic increase yet. Our systems are monitoring though very closely.
Yep.
If you walk through our, my office, you'll see the different screens that we're continuously monitoring. So as of today, we've been pretty fortunate. But that, as, as fast as AI is growing, the exponential speed that it is coming along, it can happen at any time. So it isn't a matter of if, it's just a matter of when. And we're trying our darndest to be as far ahead of it as possible, you know? Tyler mentioned our response plans, having a, a physical copy, you know, on hand, so that way when the, when the computers crash, we can actually recover faster. Having a solid backup plan in place, actually, we'll get to in a little bit later discussion. We believe we are molding that system in a way that would allow us to recover much faster than the 24 days. We've seen months, not even just weeks, in other counties that have been hit within the last two years. It's just, it's a matter of how you segregate, how you protect the network, and those are the things that we are continually, continuing to evolve.
You and your team did a great job. We were down there working side by side, and y'all were running around like a bunch of rats, trying to put out fires at every corner.
Rabbits, rabbits, not rats.
What's wrong with rats?
Okay.
And because of that, we are actually trying to really figure out how we want to better prepare moving forward.
Yeah, and, and y'all did a wonderful job. I've, I've been working in emergency services stuff since 2002, and it has progressed in directions that you couldn't even imagine. Watching y'all and what you were having to deal with, not things that most people would anticipate. And y'all were on top of it, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. My, my team certainly likes the world.
Well, I commend the efforts. I mean, knowing that we're constantly under attack, you know, the fact that we haven't seen a successful attack, I mean, that, I commend you and the team for that.
Thank you.
What, what it really does, though, it just, it, it raises further concerns because anything that has a circuit board is subject to being attacked. And with AI, the attacks get more sophisticated, more frequent. And I'm gonna talk in a little bit about battery energy storage systems, which are clearly connected to the internet. And of course, the implication is they're gonna be under constant attack, or could be if somebody wanted them to.
Very true.
Also applies to election equipment.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Let's take a five-minute break and come back at 10 o'clock. And Noel, we'll start with you on 1.6.
So get ready.
Well, just.
I'm ready.
I can't believe I've seen some of the rats.
They were. Acre insurance are short-term products, seasonal, you know? So, you know, you gotta, for days, so it's just one big part.
Yeah, it's one small link.
The next item on the agenda is 1.6, Consider Discuss to Take Appropriate Action to Ratify and Confirm Acceptance of the Office of the Governor Grant Award for Grant Number 2781410 for the Kirk County Victims' Rights Coordinator. Ms. Putnam?
This is a grant that goes through the Office of the Governor and is scored through ACOG. It's for our Victims' Rights Coordinator Office. I do believe we actually scored second out of all of the grant applications this year for the Victims' Rights Coordinator, the Evocad grant. And that's thanks to Pam. She did an amazing job. I'm here to request accept this on her behalf, and it's in the amount of $58,440.
I'll move to approve the acceptance of that grant.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve, uh, to ratify and confirm the acceptance of the grant from the Office of the Governor for the Kerr County Victims' Rights Coordinator.
Yes.
Noel, how does that compare to last year's grant?
It's about the same. Um, I don't have last year's numbers for sure. Tanya might know a little bit better, but typically you can't go up, you can only go down. So our, our match is around 14,000 that we have to match to that. And it goes towards salaries, copier expenses, um, office supplies, things of that nature.
Very good. And just for information purposes, uh, we've gotten this grant now for about a decade.
Long time.
And the only recent, well, last year we had to, we reduced it in order to be able to be in compliance with their requirements.
And this, this office also serves the 198th and the 216th, so it's Gillespie, Banderas, and Kerr Counties.
And not to discount the County Court of Law docket, uh, that's over a thousand cases a year, just in County Court of Law. So we're talking about a lot of victims here. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. As I call the next item, I'm going to ask William Whitson to go to the podium for me. Uh, this is item 1.7, consider discuss to take appropriate action to approve the intergovernmental agreement and support for middle mile grant application. How many of you in this room have met Mr. Whitson? William, you need to meet this guy. Uh, he is part of the team that is heading up the management of our long-term recovery group. Uh, and his, uh, it's been provided by a very generous donor. Uh, he actually, uh, was in charge of Hurricane Harvey, uh, recovery. Uh, so, uh, he works with this day in and day out. And broadband is one of my pet peeves, and that's why I have him up here. Uh, I live in West Kerr County, and there are parts of West Kerr County that you can't get to hunt without losing your coverage. That's the truth. It lets you live out there, you don't, you don't appreciate that, but it's, it is the truth. Uh, and, and this middle mile is the part that we need to get in order to be able to provide broadband coverage in West Kerr County, which is where the north and south fork of the Guadalupe River start and where all the floods begin. So this is something very critical to, uh, being able to predict and, uh, project, uh, warnings on that river. And so this is something that is near and dear to my heart. I just wanted to introduce William. Uh, for those of you that haven't met him, go by and see him. With that, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we accept this intergovernmental agreement and, uh, support for the middle mile grant application.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. William, you have anything to add?
Well, thank you, Judge, appreciate it, and good morning, Commissioners Court. And we're here to work hard for this county and for all the citizens and make sure that this recovery goes better, and this is a major step forward. Uh, we got to be able to gather the data innovation is using all your assets, uh, and focusing on a goal. And this goal is to feed the river warning system, uh, that we're working on, so we appreciate your support.
And we appreciate your assistance.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
No, just, it will make a big difference with the flood warning system, so we're looking forward to having that. Just for, hope it comes through.
I do have a question for debris. I, I, 1.8 million cubic yards.
It's actually closer to 1.9.
Yeah, it's closer to 1.9.
Is that, is that larger than Harvey's?
Yes.
I think it's the largest in Texas, right?
Right.
We thought we had a pretty good record going, but I think y'all beat it.
Yeah, nothing to be proud of, of course, but.
I, I will say this.
Amazing it's all removed.
Different type of debris, but.
Yeah, it is a different type.
To your point, Commissioner, uh, we'll say this, that you guys are miles ahead of where we started and where we ended up, uh, in Orenzis County. And I will say that getting the, the debris out of the water was a major fight at that time. Uh, we can prevail, but, uh, the point is you all had all that done and you made a lot of progress. And so I have to tip my hat to you, certainly.
That's good perspective, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I think we're all proud of our response thus far, but at the same time, boy, what a devastating disaster.
I think, I think the public needs to be aware too, William, that this is just one of many of these to come.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we're going to have these interlocal agreements, we're going to be working together with y'all, and, and, and this is one of, one of many. Like you told me this morning, it's the start.
Yes, this is, uh, step one, but, uh, we're going to finish strong.
Good.
But we wanted everybody to see your face, know who you are, and recognize you when you're around.
Thank you.
So with that, those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Moving on to item 1.8, consider discuss, uh, update on matters related to the Hill Country Energy Subregional Planning Commission. Commissioner Paces.
Thank you. Uh, just want to inform the public that our Subregional Planning Commission Board meeting will take place, uh, Tuesday. That's next Tuesday, November 18th. It'll be here in the Kerr County Courthouse, but it's upstairs in courtroom number one. I'm expecting a little larger crowd and certainly want to encourage the public to attend. Uh, with all the necessary approvals in place between Kerr, Kendall, and Gillespie County, Counties, uh, we will formally welcome Gillespie County Judge Daniel Jones and Commissioner Keith Cromer as two new members of our board. Uh, interesting that we talked about cybersecurity just a little bit ago.
That's the time, what time is it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yes, thank you, uh, 4:00 PM.
Four.
4:00 PM, in fact, there might be some confusion because we initially said 4:30. And because of some key attendees, we're trying to advance it a little bit to accommodate other schedules, but it, it's been moved up to 4:00 PM on Tuesday, November 18th, here in the Kerr County courtroom, or courthouse, uh, in one of the district courtrooms, number one upstairs. Okay, so, back to cybersecurity. Last week, I called Chief Nim Kim with TIDAM, and of course, I left a detailed message, so he knew that I was talking about cybersecurity associated with, uh, BEST facilities. And he had Blair Walsh, who is the Assistant Agency Director and Chief of External Affairs, return my call. And we had a, a good and lengthy conversation, and I specifically raised concerns about House Bill 150, GA 48, GA 49, and what appears to me to be the lack of anything being done to ensure compliance with those bills, as well as any other measures that are being taken to ensure that no components that are made in China, Russia, Iran, or North Korea are actually hidden within the batteries or control system circuit boards in these BEST facilities that are being installed across the state. Uh, you know, measures are being taken, the governor is involved, but again, uh, GA 48, GA 49 address cybersecurity concerns, but only in association with limiting contractors from doing business with companies or affiliates of those nations that I mentioned who are on our naughty list. But the real issue is ensuring that we don't end up with control system or circuit boards, either in the batteries or in the control systems in these facilities. And, uh, Director Walsh didn't have any answers for my questions, but, you know, she seems to be willing to look into it with enthusiasm. And she did indicate that she saw no reason why we couldn't arrange a joint meeting between all the key stakeholders, which in this case includes Public Utilities Commission of Texas, ERCOT, LCRA, and our 391 Subregional Planning Commission Board. So I'm looking forward to that, I hope it will happen. Also, uh, so the folks are aware, you know, last month on October 23rd, I and three other concerned citizens went to Austin and attended the PUCT, uh, board meeting with their three commissioners. And during the public input session, we sent a very strong message about our disappointment that they're not coming to, uh, attend coordination planning meetings. And we raised all sorts of different concerns and left them a copy of the letter that's all available on our website. Uh, the good news is that as a result, uh, I believe at the direction of, uh, the chairman, Mr. Mike Hoke, who is the Director of Public Engagement, is going to attend our meeting on the 18th, and he will speak about the authority of PUCT regarding BEST. I'm not overly hopeful that he's going to tell us anything we haven't already heard, but what I am looking forward to is I want to impress upon him our concerns. And, and so if there are members of the public that will want to speak, I think that's a great opportunity so he can take back a message to his board with our concerns. And we've put a lot of that in writing, but, and in addition to just set the stage for it, we'll talk a little bit more about cybersecurity concerns before Mr. Hoke talks. And we've also arranged to have Kevin Palmer, who is the Van Zant County Fire Marshal, uh, either in attendance or on a team's meeting, I'm hopefully, hoping he'll be here in person. But Van Zant County has done quite a bit in the fight against battery energy storage, um, to the extent they've got some, uh, legal disputes, but, uh, Kevin will be able to tell us what they're doing, how they're doing in their fight, and he'll cover all the applicable codes and regulations and let us know which requirements have been particularly difficult for BEST developers, uh, to address. And then, uh, we also are going to have Mountain Home Volunteer Fire Department Chief and President of CARFA, Brian Alexander, present to speak to the difficulties of our rural volunteer fire departments in facing any kind of lithium ion battery fire. Uh, because obviously we would very much struggle to do anything other than try to contain the fire, can't put it out. Uh, please denote that Representative Wesfordell is planning to attend this important meeting. And, uh, again, just a reminder, the board meeting is open to the public. We encourage concerned citizens to attend, provide input, and learn more about battery energy storage and the threats it represents. And finally, I have been invited to speak about BEST at the Kerr County Catrudes Club, Club meeting next Monday evening, November 17th. That meeting is held at Faith Christian Church on Sydney Baker Street, just past Highway 173. Doors open at 5:30 PM, meeting starts at 6:00. So, boy, if, if you aren't really familiar with BEST, come out and learn more about it, and what we're doing in the fight against it, and what you can do. The meeting is open to all. That's all I got, open to questions.
Any discussion?
Still got to kill the federal subsidies, that's what, kill it right there.
That's first and foremost.
I think we're chasing our tail down here to some degree.
To some degree, I would agree, but, and there's progress on the subsidies, so we'll see.
Well, I would say that just learning and having this information, uh, is invaluable.
Absolutely.
Be informed about what we're going to have to confront.
Well, and, and thank you for that lead-in, because again, I will inform the public that we have a very comprehensive website, www.hcesrpc, which is the acronym for our name, hcesrpc.com. And you can follow all the correspondence, you can see the videos of our meetings, you can read the minutes to our meetings, and there's a lot of other key information out there, so. That's all I got.
Anything else? Very good. We're going to move down to item 1.10 on the agenda, which is consider discuss to take appropriate action to cast votes for the Kerr Central Appraisal District Board Members for the 26, 27 terms. Uh, I placed this on the agenda, we don't, the votes aren't due until what, December 15th?
15th, uh, we need to pass.
We've got some, some time here, but I wanted to at least bring it up so that we're thinking about this. It's important.
All right.
There are 5,000 votes on that appraisal district. Uh, a little over 1,500 of those votes are cast by the county, another 1,500 or so cast by KISD. We are by far the biggest, uh, voters in this thing. And we traditionally spread our votes around, we like to wait closer to when they're due because we have so many votes that we can elect several different, several, uh, representatives on that, on that board. Uh, and right now, I think we have three, uh, Rick Bowles, Jack Birch, and Larry Preo. That's the candidates put on that board. And for those of you that don't really know what the appraisal, uh, board does, uh, they're the ones that make the appraisals that everybody complains about. Blame us for it, but we didn't do it, they do it. Uh, but it's very, a very important thing for them to go through and evaluate, uh, what the appraisal on the properties need to be. And so unless we need to do something this week, I will pick this off to the next Commissioners Court meeting. But I wanted to get it out there so everybody is aware of what we're doing. Uh, and if anybody has any interest that wants to, to run, uh, be elected to this board, let us know. Okay. So with that, we'll move on to item point 111. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to authorize overtime pay instead of compensatory time earned for engineering assistant, floodplain manager for hours worked over 40 hours directly related to responding to the July 4 flooding disaster for the pay period through January 31, 2026. Ms. Solder, and this is something we're doing, uh, every, every Commissioners Court meeting?
I have been, however, um, with our last meeting with FEMA last week, they did say that they have included the overtime for this employee through January 31st, 2026. And so I'm bringing it to you to approve, so I don't have to keep coming back here every Commissioners Court.
I move we approve.
Yeah.
Second.
Those in favor, raise your hand. We did that one, record speed, thank you. But that's, that's, that's very important for the employees.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's just for one employee.
Right, one person.
Item 1.12 is the next agenda item, consider discuss and take appropriate action to accept volunteer hours and in-kind donations from the July 2025 flood event. Ms. Solder.
I'm going to pass on this one again, I still don't have the numbers from TIDAM.
Okay. Okay. Are y'all looking at this agenda?
Not much left of it.
Three more agenda items before, before executive session, which is very rare for us like this. Item 1.13, consider discuss to take appropriate action for the Commissioners Court approval, naming four private roads in the High Ten Ranch Development, Precinct 4. Ms. Hoffler.
Uh, Jared Martin from Wellborn Engineering and Surveying applied through the Kerr 911 Office on 8/26/2025 regarding the Commissioners Court approval to name four private roads in the High Ten Ranch and Precinct 4. This development is located just north of I-10 and is on the west side of FM 479, just north of the substation. We should have, I think, a large format drawing of this. These are private roads that Kerr County will not be maintaining and is also exempt from plating. The county engineer has approved this request to name the four private roads. The requested names are Ozona Station Road Northwest, Doge Road Northwest, Roosevelt Trail Road Northwest, and Segovia Way Northwest. Uh, at this time, I asked the Commissioners Court for their approval to name the listed four privately maintained roads in the High Ten Ranch Development and Precinct 4. And the county engineer has also written a letter of approval, and that was part of this new process, for developments in that, that are not plating.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the four names that have been submitted for the High Ten Ranch Development as presented. Any discussion?
Yes. I know, Tom and I know, do the rest of y'all know where this facility, what it's going to border?
No, tell us.
The proposed BEST facility at 479 and 10. It's going to be an L-shaped bordering it. So five, if I remember correctly, five lots were going to be right next to that facility.
I wonder if that's going to affect the sale price?
If it gets out, but anyway.
Well.
We've got Jared sitting here, don't you?
Yes.
Well, he's not a realtor, don't make him dance with that.
There's no thing, he's just a surveyor.
Oh, okay.
My dad was a surveyor.
And, and it's not his problem or anything, we discussed it and, uh, but realization, that's where it's going, so I.
There's other ways of looking at this. Most of these BEST facilities, as a general rule, put in solar farms and, and wind generators to support data mining, uh, that goes on to those locations, so, so it's going to be either or.
Oh, yeah, and most of our neighboring counties, as we've done more exploratory research to include Gillespie and, and Banderas have that in their equation.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of smaller solar farms with smaller BESTs co-located, but that's not what they're looking to do here, which is larger facilities. But while you're up there, Kelly, thank you for removing graffiti on some of our roads publicly. I wanted to say that, there was some politically driven graffiti that was put down and between the sheriff's office, who, Sheriff and I talked about it, and your folks, you got rid of that. And it was inappropriate, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I take advantage of being up there.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, and a second.
And a second? Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Here we go.
Thank you.
Unanimous. Item 1.14, consider discuss to take appropriate action to ratify and confirm the memorandum of understanding for the Texas statewide radio inoperability agreement. of understanding for the Texas statewide radio inoperability agreement. Sheriff.
Yes. I'm looking for y'all's approval on this. And this is because we're involved in OLS, and we receive funds from them. It requires you have these, requires us to have these interoperability channels, so I'm just looking for y'all's approval so that the judge can sign this.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion in a second, and you had the discussion. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you. Item 1.15, consider discuss and take appropriate action to contract with Castle Lake Volunteer Fire Department. This is the standard contract we do every year.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve entering contract with Castle Lake Volunteer Fire Department, as we usually do. Any discussion?
Those guys are great. Castle Lake VFD.
Yeah, help me out again. We're District Bandera. Thank you.
It's just a tip. We barely have anything.
Yeah. And there is a best right by that. That was one of the ones I was talking about.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Nope.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Approval agenda. 2.1, budget amendments. To be to the approval agenda at 10:25, record speed.
All right.
Go ahead.
Okay. Invoices for today's approval amount to $368,560.70.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the budget amendments as presented?
I'm sorry, there are not any budget amendments. I jumped to bills.
That's the bills. That's right. I still move to approve.
Well, let's just get, get it clear on the record here. Item 2.1 is the budget amendments, and there are none, so we're moving on to item 2.2.
Yes.
Which are late, uh, pay bills.
So invoices for today's consideration, $368,560.70.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 2.3, late bills?
Yes. Invoices for late bills amounted to $432,648.16.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the late bills as presented. Any discussion?
Just what, what were the late bills? I see it's some rental for Hill Country Youth Event Center, is that right?
Yes, that is the money that Tiedem is sending us because they host the EOC. And so when that money comes in from Tiedem, we pass that money on to the Hill Country Youth Event Center.
Oh, good. All right. Yeah, appreciate it. Probably the largest chunk they've gotten in a while for that much rental continuing.
Pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah. They've, they've been paying on this since pretty much the flood started.
It's great coming in, but we don't want to do it again.
No, we don't. I get it. Thank you.
Well, and they've been very generous with us, the way they're doing this.
Right.
We've undeployed vast majority of the people from the state, and yet they keep paying us rent, which we appreciate.
Yeah.
Any other discussion, sir? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 2.4, auditor reports.
There are not any.
Thank you. 2.5, monthly reports?
And I got a stack of them. October 2025, Constable, Constable Tommy Rodriguez, Precinct 1, Constable Kyle Snyder, Precinct 2, Constable Paul Gonzalez, Precinct 3, Constable Brad Ryder, Precinct 4, Justice of the Peace, Judge Mitzi French, Precinct 1, Judge Kathy Mitchell, Precinct 3, payroll approval, County Treasurer Tracy Selden, County Clerk's Office, County Clerk Nadine Alford, Environmental Health and Animal Services Director Reagan Gibbons, Environmental Health and OSSF Director Ashley Batters, District Clerk's Office, District Clerk Dawn Lance, investment portfolio summary, July 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2025, County Treasurer Tracy Selden. I move for approval.
Got a motion in a second to approve the monthly reports as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 2.6, court orders. I reviewed the court orders from the October 27 meeting, and numbers 41606 through 41623. They all appear to be in order, and I make a motion that we approve the orders as presented.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the orders as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Moving on to the information agenda, 3.1, status reports from department heads. Okay, they're being done. We'll move on to 3.2, status reports from elected officials. Any? Here we go. Ms. Reeves.
Good morning, gentlemen. Sometime between 5 o'clock on October 29th and around 9:00 PM that night, the server on our property tax software crashed. That timeframe is an estimate. Our system's backed up every day around 9 o'clock at night. My office discovered the crash the next morning around 6:30. By 6:30, between 6:30 and 7:00 that morning, I'd notified our software provider as well as Kerr County IT. Kerr County IT did an excellent job in helping us and backing us through the process. By the night of the 31st, we were back up and running. Unfortunately, that four-hour gap between close of business and when the normal backup was, we lost all of the records for tax collection on October 29th. Fortunately, we had all of the checks in hand as well as credit card receipts. We have been able to repost those, and we have been able to repost roughly 50-plus percent of the cash payments by recognizing people that were paid, that were in, that we knew of. They've come in with their receipts. We're working through other methods to find the other ones. Probably will resort to public information officer to help us put out the word. If they'll bring their receipts in, they did pay cash, we can credit them. Visiting with IT, we do not feel like it was anything but an old server, nothing malicious. I have made the auditor aware of the problem as well. I made her aware last Monday. We're working on that. Cory can kindly update you on the technical part, but I wanted the court to be aware of that. And hopefully, the other, and it's a small portion of our total collections that was paid in cash, but we would, we will be working on that. The people who may be listening or hear about this, they'll bring in their receipt. It will be timely posted.
Thank you, sir. How old are we? Can we discuss how old? No. Yeah. Vulnerabilities with it. Got it? Never mind. Thank you.
We're sorry about the crash, but we're very happy. It's about to recover.
Our staff worked very hard to, we were also down for two days, so we were the old-fashioned way, handwriting receipts of people that paid. Took them most of last week to get that caught up, but we have got that worked as well. So we're back running. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Bob, you, you mentioned a small amount. I mean, can you give me just a ballpark? What are we talking about? How much, you know, the cash payments that we don't have receipts on?
I'm sure the sheriff doesn't want me to mention how much cash we take in. It's a small portion of our total collections. Do you share? Okay, thank you.
I think we've handled that topic very discreetly.
Was, was it just payments from that day, though, or?
That four hours?
Yeah, just, just one day's worth of payments.
We just lost it one day because the system is backed up every night, and it was just that timeframe between close of business and that. And as I said, we noticed it about 6:30 the next morning when my staff gets more. And that's one of the, that's one of the backup processes we're streamlining. Thank you, Bob. Thank you.
Well done. Item 3.3, status reports and liaison commissioners. Anything to report?
Just one item. I failed to mention for history's inclusion in the event tomorrow. Barbara Oates has done an incredible job with the display for Ally Burton that's going to go inside permanently our Veterans Building. So in case you missed it, one more time, tomorrow, 3:00 PM, 5:50 Earl Garrett, you can still go by at your own leisure and check out a very cool history thing capturing his whole life and what he's done and why we named that the Colonel Ally Burton Jr. Building. Thank you.
And one thing that I have been alerted to is parking. And it's going to be, we're going to fill up pretty quickly.
Good.
If you plan to come, find a parking place.
There's a lot right across the street.
There is. You can just walk down. There's just a block.
Yep.
We skipped the elected officials.
I'll, I'll just have one quickie. I attended a CARFA meeting last week, and just so everybody's aware, they had elections, and they have re-elected Brian Alexander as president of CARFA.
Elected officials is what Bob was talking about.
Other elected officials.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought we'd moved on to.
I thought, I think we elected that guy.
Yeah, that's right. We did.
Okay. Any other liaison reports?
I'm still attending all my liaison positions, including Kerr EDC that's been extremely active. Getting to work with William that was in here earlier and, and everybody, and I'll tell you, they're, they're doing a tremendous job.
They really are.
On this recovery. And it's, it's too detailed to ever go into, and, you know, as you know. But, but you need to know that they're doing an awesome job on, on working in all areas of recovery for this county.
But I did want to get William's face familiar with the people so they know who he is.
Yeah. Yeah, he's a good leader.
Executive session, do we have anything on executive session today?
Yes, sir.
And we are adjourned.
I missed it. I told you 11. They asked me how long's it been.